With the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the meeting. All right. The next order is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved second.
It's moved in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We're adopted. Now for our special presentation. Welcome Brenda. It's Laura Hears.
Good evening everyone. It's a pleasure to be back here this evening. So the purpose of this meeting is to build your profile of the new superintendent and to look at the draft of the brochure that will go active tomorrow as the position should be open tomorrow and then also to look at the 30 qualities, the survey results, to look at the district review and to give you some feedback on what we heard with our stakeholder groups. So we'll try and compress that and move right along and please stop me if you have questions. The first thing I wanted you to take a look at, you have at your place, just the timeline, just to refresh your memory as to where we are in the process. Things are moving along exactly as we had hoped and we're at the last item on stage two. So, and then we move into opening the application process during the month of November and it will close on December 15th and that's when we'll come back then on December 18th to visit with you about the applicant pool. So, did you have any questions about this timeline or still feeling good about it? Okay. And I did have extra copies over on the table if there are any of the visitors tonight would want to take a look at that and refresh their memories. So the first thing I'd like to do is talk to you about what we heard when we met with all of our stakeholder groups and Teri has got what I call the most common themes that we heard and we've put that in a narrative for you. It's that's front and back. Mm-hmm. And while she's passing that out, I'll tell you that we met with 189 individuals who visited with us, came to meetings over different days in September and October. So it was a wonderful opportunity for us to visit the high schools, meet with students, parents, staff, community leaders. Of course, we met with each board member and each board candidate individually as well. So just, you can read this for yourself, but I thought I would hit a couple of the high points for you as to what we heard because again, this is what we heard generally across all groups. So the first thing that, you know, and you know this, that you have a great history in this community and in the school district of a deep tradition of academic excellence and we heard that from everyone. That people are very appreciative of the skilled staff that you have hired here, tremendous appreciation for the educational programming that's provided by that staff and even the students said that people move here for the schools and the opportunities that you provide for great education. So I thought that that would make you proud. Also, the communities, the 14 communities that shape your school district, they were described, you know, as vibrant, welcoming, safe, family-friendly communities that each have their own unique personality and local traditions, but that's what makes this such a rich and vibrant school district. And it has a great balance of that small-town atmosphere with big-city amenities. So we heard that time and again across the groups. Again, not only a great school district, but a wonderful place to live and raise a family, so. The third thing that we heard frequently was that, you know, there is a shift in the demographics in the school district and there's growing diversity, which is viewed as a wonderful opportunity and challenge, but also as something that the district needs to acknowledge, address, and embrace, and it is being embraced and that's a good thing. But there was some discussion in most groups about how there can be a deeper understanding of some of the cultural issues with that growing diversity and there was a little perception of the haves versus have-nots that they would like to see addressed, maybe through resource deployment, you know, the equity piece across the district. The fourth item, and this is when we started talking about the qualities you'd want to see in your next superintendent, I mean overwhelmingly, they felt that it was someone who needs to be, who can build trust and not only within the school district, with staff and the board, but also across the communities, with community leaders. And the term that we heard most often was this person needs to be a bridge builder, somebody who can make those transitions and build trust and just make positive connections with everyone they come in contact with. So we thought that that would be something that the board would want to be aware of and it's not just making connections within the district, but it's within the communities as well. And everybody who comes in some form builds a partnership with the district. And then also to create a culture of respect that's focused on student success and achievement. The fifth thing that we heard was, and this isn't in like priority order, this is just, we just numbered them because we like to end up with 10 if we can. And this issue spoke to the need for some stronger safety nets and supports for students within the district and in particular, they talked about social workers and counselors and nurses and mental health services and trauma-informed care. So that was something that we wanted to share with you. And also, many groups talked about how grateful they were for the one-to-one initiative, but some of the deployment pieces of that were a little problematic with not having the supports again to make that technology, to make those technology enhancements user-friendly and to be able to provide the curriculum work that a lot of folks felt they needed just some more supports within the building. So we wanted to share that with you. I use the word hiccups because it's not that there were considerable issues, but there were hiccups along the way that just need to be addressed. Next, we talked a lot with the groups about, you know, what is the management style or the leadership style that you want to see in the next superintendent? And so the word collaboration came up quite a bit, somebody who can establish, you know, a clear vision and direction with the district who will accept and genuinely seek input from others. And that there was just some discussion about the need to have more consistent district-wide policies that are implemented across all buildings, all grade levels, and in such a way that everyone was accountable for that. And then the other thing that they talked about was we need somebody with some great people skills, who's a strong individual, who if a decision is made, that it may not be a popular decision, but the person has sought input, you know, genuinely listened to all sides of an issue, made a decision and then remains steadfast and firm on that decision. So waffling was used occasionally. We don't want a waffler, so I'll share that with you. And also the importance of explaining the rationale, why are we coming to that conclusion? And that kind of led a little bit to the transparency piece, just having a clear understanding of why we're doing what we're doing. So the seventh one was about communication. They want a great communicator who's going to dialogue, be visible in the schools, lead by example, be open and honest and approachable to all, to all segments of the community. And again, that whole piece about communication was just being willing to share, be approachable, willing to dialogue. And again, these are those personal characteristics that we asked about. Number eight, this was mentioned many times, that everyone wants someone who is well-versed in financial issues for the district, fiscal issues, and in order to advance achievement at all levels, they want to make sure that the resources are utilized and deployed equitably and responsibly. And again, I think that was a piece of the transparency component of what they want to see in the next superintendent. Number nine, they want the superintendent to be a champion for the school district, for public education and present a positive and professional image everywhere that person goes. And you'll see that on your 30 qualities, that actually came up as like the number one criteria that folks want to see in the next superintendent. They also want somebody, you know, who's empathetic and collaborative and we've already talked about the collaborative piece, genuine, honest, and somebody who will work to create harmony throughout the district, which is not always easy in a district this size and you often have to make some decisions that not everybody will agree with, but if you do it in a respectful, kind and considerate manner and you're transparent, then the chance of it being a more harmonious and acceptable decision was felt by many to be the path they'd like to see taken. So I'm sharing that with you. And then lastly, there was just overwhelming agreement that you need somebody with a proven track record, who's got a skill set that can strengthen community partnerships, who can develop trust with all stakeholders within the district and have someone who understands and has dealt with diversity issues in a positive way and understands diversity and is coming to you from a district that's of similar size to Shining Mission and has a record of proven achievement results. So, do you have any questions about that? Is it pretty much what you thought we might hear?
Pretty much.
Very good. Well, we're just sharing that with you. Again, I thought the participation was good and we had, as I said, we had 189 folks who were willing to sit down and talk with us, so it's always good.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
If you don't mind.
Yes.
And thank you for this, well-written and thank you for speaking on it. Was there anything that rang out what not to have?
Yes, there was quite a bit on that and that was, but we try and give the common themes.
Okay.
It was just the opposite of those personal characteristics, somebody who's not so autocratic or top-down, who is, you know, someone who is very approachable and personable, genuine, sincere and honest. So just the opposite of that is what we don't want to see.
That's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Got one here. Number 10 is where I think you get the closest to it. So although it talks about a leader that should have a proven track record within the district, how about minimum standards, minimum experience, minimum qualifications?
It didn't really come up. Folks were very interested in somebody who had a teaching background, but in Kansas you have to have a teaching background to get a superintendent's license. But they wanted someone, you know, who, there really were no minimum requirements, just someone who has been a superintendent or a deputy superintendent, who understands good instruction and curriculum and will be able to have a good conversation with teachers about what's happening in classrooms and recognize good instruction and have a heart for teaching.
Okay. And then one other just clarification and it's that we can set proper expectations when we begin to talk to these candidates, visibility. So at number seven, we talk about visibility in the schools at all levels and through all segments of the Shining Mission community.
Right.
Did you get a sense that it was in-person or if they just have a presence that whether it's digital or?
In-person, without a doubt, hands down, in-person. Although communication through newsletters and meetings was certainly something that we talked about, clear communication, written as well as oral, but when it's visibility, it's in-person.
Okay. Good to know.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anything else?
All right.
All right. So the next thing we're going to look at is the 30-quality survey. And so Teri has a document for you that's three pages long. Remember when I told you this would be in the form of a spreadsheet? That's what we're going to look at here very, well, I won't say quickly because it may take a few minutes because it's small print, but we also have a synopsis for you.
Do we have extra copies or is it digital?
I do.
Digital for the folks to see?
If you display it, nobody will be able to read it.
Okay.
But I do have extra copies that I will be happy to give to folks. Do you have enough for the board?
Thank you.
And for yourself, Teri, for a record?
Yes.
I would be happy to give you the extra copies I have here. And it will, we are able to drop it into Board Docs after the meeting, so anybody can access it via Board Docs.
Teri, you've got two more, is that right?
I have three more.
Three more, if anybody, Teri's got three more.
That would be helpful. Okay, so just so you know, you had 1,831 respondents to your 30-quality survey. So if you open the cover and go to the first sheet which says raw score sheet, across the top is each category of individual who responded and they self-reported who they were. They said they were a teacher, they said they were an administrator. So you had 432 teachers, you had 32 plus two administrators, 34 administrators, support staff, you had 116 parents, you had 1102 plus seven, 1109, students, you had 11 students. I thought we'd have more students because we really pushed the students, but I guess we weren't their highest priority. Non-parent community members, you had 118, you had four of the board candidates and all seven board members who responded.
What was the total again, I'm sorry?
Eight, 1,831.
Thank you.
So as you look at this, you'll see two columns and I just wanted to describe this to you so you know what you're looking at. The qualities desired a new superintendent are on the left-hand side and that matches the characteristics on your 30-quality sheet. So the first characteristic, we summarize it on the right, but it's willing to listen to input but is a decision-maker. So the quality number is on the left, a quick description of it's on the far right. So for teachers, the raw score, 177 folks ranked that number nine. For administrators, 16 ranked it and it became number six. Do you see how that works? So that just kind of gives you the raw score. Now, what we do for you is on the next page, we summarize that by rank because one group shouldn't have more influence just because they're a larger raw score than any other group. So the rankings are what we look at and every candidate, quality I mean, and every individual group then has an equal rank. So what you will see on this page, consultant ranking slash recommendation sheet, again, qualities are on the left, the groups are across the top and how they rank that quality is the number that you see. Then if you go to the total line, you'll see every category of individual who ranked this, they ranked like the first quality number 76. So the combined ranking then was eighth. And that was a quality that we would recommend that you consider for your next superintendent profile, which is willing to listen to input but is a decision-maker. And we combined it with 13, which is possesses excellent people skills and presents a positive district image. And that was number seven in the combined ranking. So as we, let's look at the combined ranking column because that's the most important column for you to think about for the profile of the superintendent. So if you look at the second quality, which has leadership skills to respond to challenges of ethnic and cultural diversity, that ranked three. So of course, we're going to suggest that, we're going to recommend that you use that as part of the profile. The next one, number, had 15 on the ranking list and we did not choose that one and it also didn't come up very often in stakeholder meetings. Now the fourth one, we're asking you, recommending that you consider it because that was one that you talked about at a board meeting, should the candidate be required to have an EDD or a PhD. So the board ranked that sixth, but no other group ranked it that high. So that's why we just said consider. Do you want to consider that and we can talk about it. The next recommendation is quality five. Remember, this is a big one for stakeholders, inspires trust, self-confidence and models high standards. That was number two in the rankings in all groups, so we would suggest you use that as part of your profile. The next one, number six, is a strong communicator, speaks well, listens well and writes well. That's number six, so we would also recommend you use that in your profile. Let's slip down now to number eight. This was number four in the combined rankings and that has experience recruiting and maintaining exceptional staff for the district and schools. That was a very high priority for all groups, actually. The next one, number nine, is a consider, consideration for you and that is the ability to build consensus and commitment among individuals and groups. That came out quite a bit in our stakeholder meetings. It only ranked 17 in the combined list, but you had, your parent group, which is the largest group, ranked that number eight. So that's why we said you may want to consider that. Drop down to quality number 11, ability to delegate authority while maintaining accountability. That's number 13, we would recommend that. That's that strong decision-maker piece. The next quality, number 12, previous experience that will benefit the long-term financial health of the district, we'd recommend you include that, that came up several times in the stakeholder meetings as well. The next one, number 13, we remember we're going to combine with number one, which is excellent people skills, positive district image. The next quality, number 15, was ranked number five, number one by the board, strongly committed to student-first philosophy in all decisions. And slip on down to number 18, which was ranked ninth across all groups, experience in selection and implementation of educational priorities. And then the number, quality number 20 promotes positive student behavior. That was ranked number nine. The board didn't rank it very high and it didn't come up really in any of our stakeholder groups. So that's something that we'd like you to consider because of the 30-quality survey and where it fell. What the board does with that, of course, would be, you know, your choice. And then we slipped down to number 27, quality 27. It was 13 on the combined rankings, possesses the ability to enhance student performance, identify and close achievement gaps. And that was something that was mentioned often. Then the one that, the very last quality, number 30, was ranked number one by most groups and that is promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and board. So I have condensed those down into a single sheet.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Number 29 was ranked number 11?
Yes.
Why was that not on the consider?
Because the board ranked it number 22. It wasn't very high on the board's list. We can consider and I made a note, the board may want to consider this, but as a group, you didn't rank it very high, so it didn't. And usually that falls to, when you talk about able to set educational priorities, you sometimes lean toward that anyway and it mostly falls to an assistant superintendent. So it was one of those that, yes, we can talk about it, consider it, use it in the profile if you think it's a top priority for you. So I did condense all this down into a single sheet. So you don't have to use a magnifying glass. And we can work with this. I forgot to give this to you, Teri. You probably have some extra copies, but. So these are the recommendations and considerations. So I pulled everything off the sheet that said recommend or consider and put it on a single sheet so you could read it easier. Those of you who love numbers, do you have any questions about the spreadsheet? So the blue sheet that you were just given, we combined one and 13, that's what it would say on the profile. That's the quality. The number in parentheses is the quality. So the second one possesses leadership skills is quality two. The third bullet inspires trust is quality five. Is a strong communicator, quality six. And then you'll see as you go down that list, promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and boards is quality 30. So we didn't order this in any way except by quality. And then you have your considerations at the bottom. So as you think about these, you don't want to have more than 12 in the space we have available on the flyer or the font will be so small, the candidate won't be able to read it. So you need to probably limit yourself to between 10 and 12. But this gives you something to think about and we actually do need you to come to consensus.
A question would be what rules of thumb are there as it relates to putting these in an order? I mean, have you seen some districts do it based on the total survey, based on board priority?
Mostly it's the board's desire to order. This is the first thing we want a candidate to see, this is the second thing we want them to see, so you can order these in any way you want.
So you said between 10 and 12?
Mm-hmm.
And we've got 11 in the recommend section.
You do.
Can I count that correctly?
Yes.
Actually 12 because you combined?
The combination though is just one.
Right, okay. But we've got 11 things, 10 to 12.
And if you wanted to pop up, well, if you wanted to pop up something up from the consider list, is there one that you would want to consider under recommendations?
The second one, but that could be combined with the last one.
Yes, we can combine.
Well, if we combine the last one which says promote a positive and professional environment with the first bulleted point, that gives us 10 bullets. Is that my math right?
I'm not sure I understood you, Dr. Denny. What are you thinking?
I said the second one in consider.
Is able to build consensus.
Are you down in consider?
Yeah, I was down in consider.
Okay.
The second one in consider could be combined with the last one.
I misunderstood, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we can easily do that.
And a couple of the ones up above can be combined as well, I would think.
Well, I think the first one promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and board had the highest ranking.
It did.
Among all those that participated, so I think that might be number one and what we connect to it, that there may be another subject matter that falls within that, but that being the highest priority since that was really agreed upon by, I think, all groups that participated.
Mm-hmm. Do you, are you saying you want that to be the first?
Number one.
Quality on the brochure?
I would agree. I would disagree. Sorry.
I don't know you.
I would disagree because the students didn't rank at that and we are, while obviously parent involvement is wanted, I think we would be wrong as a school district to not lead with something student-oriented. I mean, not that I don't agree with it, I mean, obviously I do, but I just think that, you know, when we're stepping out and looking for a new superintendent, the first thing we want to say is individuals, groups and parent involvement or do we want to talk about our students?
Well, I said you could combine.
Yeah.
That one with another one.
That'd be great.
So that could be combined with a student piece.
Right.
And put it all together because if you look at the sheet itself, it was number one, that was number one with teachers, with support staff, with parents, with non-parent community members, with board candidates and board of education. So I think priority-wise, it held a high position, but I certainly agree with having the student component in there, but I think there's some way to incorporate that with student.
Well, total respondents too, you're talking 1,820, 20, if my numbers are right. 11 students were, only participated and ranked at seventh, but you have 1,820 other people that ranked at number one.
Right.
So I think that's pretty high priority.
I don't disagree. I think it is an extremely high priority, but I think when we're going to look for a superintendent of a district of students, that students should be in the first sentence.
A lot of districts lead with is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy in all decisions.
I was just going to suggest, yes.
Yes. And then fill in below that.
Yeah.
So if we combined is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy in all decisions and promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and board, could that be combined into one?
Certainly.
But I don't think combining is really going to help the matter that we have kind of a limited amount of space and you don't want the, is that what, I mean?
Well, yes, there is a limited amount of space, but you can combine to compress it a little bit.
Right.
Yeah.
In picturing what this will look like when we publish it.
Would you like to see what it will look like?
Yeah.
Shauna Samuels created this. Did I give this to you already, Teri?
No. This is the draft.
So Shauna Samuels did a beautiful job of drafting your brochure and if you look on the back, profile of an ideal candidate is where this would live.
Okay, this helps, thank you.
So you've got some white space, I mean, you can, we gave her our draft that you just saw.
Right.
And those are the recommended ones that she dropped in there, so you could see what it looks like.
So I asked for your knowledge of other districts.
Yes.
So I asked for your knowledge of other districts and how they position it. We're competing, we're competing for the best candidate out there. I'm wondering if it would be helpful to subset the profile where these are the components that we feel are most important in leadership, and then these are the most we find are most important in administrative skills and experience. Because I think of this list, there's two things there. And my personal thought is I want to reflect from the survey, which of those were the priorities, meaning a lot of leadership skills were highlighted. At least, that's what I took away. And so I'm almost thinking there's two subsets, that there's a leadership component, and then there's administrative and qualifications component.
So Brad, you wanted to divide, like, his points there and have a subset?
Five and five.
Would you label it or just organize it?
The profile of an ideal candidate subset, leadership qualities, semicolon, four or five bullet points. And then another one, administrative experience and qualifications, semicolon. I'm separating those two things out, what I'll call the front page of a resume and the back page of resume, or the items that our...
We're separating soft and hard skills.
There you go. There you go. Because if I'm perusing it as a potential candidate, and that's lifted out for me, that will separate out different than maybe others are showing their priorities.
So I've got the leadership skills, but what are you going to call that second subset?
Well, one is either qualifications or experiences, because in some of these, we talk about, you know, has experience recruiting and maintaining exceptional staff in district schools. To me, that would be in that second category, that would be an actual...
Communication skills? I mean, I don't know.
The ability to, so, I'm trying to separate that one.
Yeah, I'm not...
But I turn to my peers and say, is that splitting the apple?
I'm not sure either, because we want the whole package.
Yeah.
I don't think you really need that.
And I'm not sure they both, I'm not sure they all fit into two neat categories.
I see what you're saying, though.
Yes.
And I think the person reading it, who may then be wanting to apply, will pick out things maybe that we wouldn't have thought had to be our first priority, or we had to... So we let, need them to be able to kind of...
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Maybe we could put some words in bold.
Yeah, and I think it's easy enough to go through and cluster some that says has experience recruiting, has previous experience in long-term financial health, has experience in selection and implementation, and putting those more together than splitting them apart, if that's what your attempt is. But I don't see splitting them into two areas. But you could certainly combine those that start with has experience in or previous experience or whatever, because those are pretty obvious when you look down this.
Is this a space issue to you, Brenda? I mean, as it is right now, I mean, is this for our ad and things? Like in Edweek, how is this going to appear? I remember a small three-by-three ad or something like that, that we put in some of the...
It's a digital ad.
Oh, okay.
So you're fine.
Times have changed, okay. So this would be our digital ad?
Mm-hmm, and this is what we'll put on the Rain Associates website. This will go on the AASA website. This is what goes to any applicant who, you know, they'll click on a link to your website, but they'll also click on the description of the district, and this will be there for them.
Right. And I see what Cindy is talking about here, about combining things that have some similarity in, you know, experiences, but I kind of like it set apart, like each of those different components are what we make sure, I don't want it lost in the verbiage there somewhere. Like, well, I got that, but oh my God, I don't have that so much.
Well, I think it's easy enough to go, is strongly committed to student-first philosophy and promotes student behavior conducive to a healthy learning environment. That incorporates some of the consider within the other without cutting anything out, since that was a ranked priority.
As far as incorporating the consider, I would do the middle one, but the other two, not so much. That's my opinion.
The what now?
Yeah.
That is able to build consensus.
I would, I would keep the second one, but the other two, not so much. That's my opinion. And I was pretty strong on the doctorate degree, but listening to the community, I think we need to look at the vast array of people.
Well, that's also a requirement by state law, so it's not something that you have to have in there, I think. I'm not state law, but don't we require a doctor, doctorate for that? No?
No.
I think you probably could put preferred.
Preferred.
We had this discussion before, and that was kind of, I'm thinking that if we didn't, that we'd say it would be highly preferred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think not having a doctorate would disqualify anyone. I don't think we want to put that up there.
I think, honey, preferred sends a message.
Right.
So, and again, leaves the door ajar.
Are you in agreement you want to add doctor preferred?
I think preferred, I don't think it's, I don't think we have to make it mandatory, but I think we could.
You could say it's highly preferred.
So can, have we made a decision on the second bullet under consider, which is able to build consensus and commitment? You could easily combine that with promotes a positive and professional environment. Would you, is that what I'm hearing, that you'd like to do that?
I would agree with that combination.
Okay. And did you want to reorder these and put the student bullet first? Is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy in all decisions? Do you want that to be first? Have you come to a consensus?
I would like the students first, that's my opinion.
Anybody else feel strongly in opposition?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay. I think we should move it up, Brenda, to number one.
Thank you.
I would think that if we could go as close as we could to the combined ranking order, I mean, that that would be...
Yes, 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 I can do that for you.
So are we looking at is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy and is able to build consensus and commitment among individuals and groups with emphasis on parental involvement? Is that what you're looking at, Patty? As the first one?
No. No, she was, you talked about combining it with a different one and moving it up to number two.
We were going to combine it with promotes, the very last bullet promotes a positive and professional environment for district employees and board. So the second one under consider would be combined with the last one under recommend.
And then moved up?
Then we'll move up is strongly committed to a student-first philosophy in all decisions to number one, and then rank order the rest of the qualities by how they ranked on your 30 qualities survey.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Did I understand everything correctly? I'm going to give myself a gold star for that one. Are you comfortable, then, with the profile? Could you take a moment, then, and review the rest of the draft of the, of the profile sheet? This is your district flyer that will be seen by everybody. We'll put it out on your website as well. I'll stop talking so you can read.
I have a question on, to apply for this position, letter of application, is that, would that letter of application be considered the writing sample?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. As well as how well they fill out the application.
But what I'm asking is the application, but then there's a, they have to grant a letter in addition. Thank you.
Brenda, do you have the application tonight, too, as well?
I do not have that. It's our standard application.
Was it sort of a fill-in-the-blank?
Yes, and we ask...
Would it look like?
Yes, that is, yes, yes. We ask questions about their background, their experiences, their references are listed as well, and then we want to know about any, have they ever been terminated from a position, and if so, for what reason? Have they ever had a contract not renewed? If so, for what reason?
Well, you want their entire employment history.
We do.
So that you can check and make sure there's no gaps, too, right?
Yes, and we get that. And we also ask for their resume. And so the other thing we do is match the resume to what they put on their application to make sure there are no gaps, or if there are gaps, that they match, and then we'll ask them about those gaps.
Brenda, could we put the, I mean, under requirements, put the highly preferred?
Yes, for sure. Yes, absolutely.
Is that where you're going to put it?
Yes. So we'll have a bullet under, to apply for this position, or under requirements, we'll just put that a doctorate is preferred, not required, but preferred. The application is done online, by the way. It's not a hard copy application.
Brenda, you want us to just rattle off a couple of them here? Bullet point number four, under points of pride, do we want to point out which test those scores come from?
ACT. Yes, thank you. I think, I think we did have the ACT on there in one of our drafts. Must have just, in the cutting and pasting, disappeared. Thank you.
I could condense that. I'm looking at seek superintendent of schools, the first paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
The second to the last sentence, and this is word smithing, but I guess that's what we're supposed to do.
Yes.
And I don't ever want to, Shauna knows what she's doing, so that's why I've got to ask, I've asked Deb first. While aligning with state standards, comma, the curriculum includes research-based instruction, comma, digital tools, and assessments to measure mastery. I don't know if we need the first and, but I'm not...
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, digital, research-based instruction, comma, digital tools, comma, and assessments to measure mastery. Yes, I agree with you.
I kind of want to look at my English teacher, the English teacher's...
And maybe make it, instead of the goal, semicolon, something just looks odd about that, maybe, maybe just make it a complete sentence instead of...
The goal is to ensure.
Yeah. Our goal is to ensure, the goal is to ensure, I don't know.
I would suggest you modify the very last sentence in that series of paragraphs to simply say, we offer all-day kindergarten and a pre-kindergarten program at 14 elementary schools.
Okay.
It's clear that we don't charge families for kindergarten, but actually, we don't charge families for any elementary fees anymore. And I think once we start getting into what we don't charge for, there's a whole long list of things, and I'd hate to leave anything out.
So would you repeat what you'd like it to say? We also offer all-day kindergarten?
If you look at that last sentence and take out the words at no cost for families...
At no cost, okay. So we also offer all-day kindergarten for families and a pre-kindergarten program at 14 elementary schools?
No, offer all-day kindergarten and a pre-kindergarten program at 14 elementary schools.
Okay, you want at no cost for families.
Maybe I ought to say all-day kindergarten at all our elementary schools, if we're just picking out 14 where we have pre-kind.
Yes, I think that would be important, in all elementary schools, full-day kindergarten in all elementary schools, yes.
Under points of pride?
Yes.
The last bullet point and the third from last bullet point both highlight an individual student's accomplishments. Can we combine those so that we're not, my personal preference here, highlighting one individual out of 27,000 students as a point of pride? Because we're calling these points of pride. Now, if we combine those and we talk about one student did this, another student did this, another student did this, in one paragraph, I'd feel more comfortable with that.
Okay.
Because earlier, we're stressing all means all and the district as a whole.
That's an easy fix.
Nobody speaks math.
Oh, okay. Going back to what Craig was talking about, that last paragraph in the upper section, why can't we just, because we, over here on the district facts, we say preschool at 14 elementary. Why can't we just throw in all-day kindergarten in the second paragraph? And then we lose that list, unless you want a separate paragraph for primary.
I think it's something to be celebrated, that in a district this size, you're able to offer all-day kindergarten in every building, and I think that will be a unique characteristic that other folks will pick up on, in a positive way. So I think if it can be a standalone, if that doesn't bother you too much, it would be...
No, it doesn't bother me, I was just curious.
And I have one to mention, under the financial management operation efficiencies in that district fax, the dark blue. If I'm a candidate, may or may not be familiar with Shawna Mission or even Kansas Schools for that matter, I think we have, with the adopted budget of 360 million, and then right above that, the bond rating, I'd like us to mention the bond that we just passed, the dollar size, and how, and just a mention of implementation, because equally important to a superintendent is the community's support of a bond, and I don't see that anywhere here.
Could you tell me the dollar amount?
223 million.
Passed in 15.
2015.
Okay.
And I have a, just...
Eighty percent plus.
Right, eighty percent plus approval. Downwards, listing all the signature programs there, most of them are sort of self-explanatory till you get to Project Blue Eagle, and I don't know that anyone would know what that is. That's police, fire, EMT, and law.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's a parentheses to kind of explain what that program is, or, I don't want to expand it too much here, but...
Public safety might be the catch-all.
Maybe, public safety. One thing we, that's not mentioned, obviously, we talk about our students in the points of pride, but we don't say any points of pride about our staff. And I didn't know. The percentage of master's degrees, some of the awards that they have won, et cetera. Do you guys know what the percentage is now?
It used to be 80, I don't know.
It used to be 83, but I don't...
Because we've got a younger, you know, younger staff.
Yeah.
It would be hard to find that out.
I think that would be important.
Imagine your HR department has that.
Yeah, I'm sure they have.
Shauna can probably pull that in, doctorates and masters.
Yeah. And some of the unique awards that our staff has received recently, which Shauna would Is there anything, you've seen a lot of these, is there anything that you see lacking in this that Shauna has maybe not included that you've seen before?
Well, you've mentioned the teacher awards, that was one item, but I didn't know if she'd worked with anybody. No, the pictures are wonderful, because I think honestly, the graphics that you use... No, the pictures are wonderful, because I think honestly, the graphics that you use and the district facts are excellent. We'll fold in the bond election, but I think it's very well done. You don't want to make it overly wordy. You know, this is just a little dipstick on describing the district to, you know, pique somebody's interest. Ooh, I think I might like to know more about that district.
And they certainly can, you know? The web is full of information, so... She's got the old logo on one of the pictures.
They still have it?
Oh, is the old logo on it?
At what point do we share our decisions on the decision tree? Meaning, maybe not here, but I don't know, on the application, do we say the point about when we would disclose candidates to the public?
So we, on our application form and on our website, you know, we mention that the applications themselves are confidential. But at some point, you need to be prepared that your name will become public.
Okay.
So we leave that up to the board to determine... And candidates, that's what we tell them. You know, we'll do our best... Your applications will be confidential, but we can't tell you at what point in the process that your names might be released to the public. So they just need to be aware of that. And are you asking me, at what point do you decide?
Well, no, you answered the question, but it leads to the next question.
Yes.
And that is, when do we make that decision?
We had talked about that earlier when the new board is seated.
That is, until January.
Yeah, we decided...
January.
I think what you're going to... The message you're going to send to all the candidates as you recruit is that until there's some culling of the herd or background checks are complete, or until you make a recommendation for some subset of the applicants,
Right.
that everything will be confidential.
Yes.
And sometime after that, the board may decide, depending on what we learn from this whole process, what to do and when to do it.
And that was one of those decisions, remember, we said we'd wait until January to decide what you wanted to do with that.
That sounds fine. I just want to be super sensitive that we're not leading a candidate down a path that they don't fully feel comfortable or understand when those decision points might be.
Well, they can always pull their application.
Yeah.
And they might. I mean, if it's not confidential. I've heard that from many superintendents.
So are we comfortable with the information you've given me that I can work with Shauna tomorrow morning and make those corrections and additions? Because tomorrow, we do want to open the application process.
Could I ask that Craig review it before it goes out?
Are you able to do that tomorrow?
I am.
Okay. So we'll make sure Shauna gets with it, because Shauna's creative.
Shauna, I will proofread what we've got tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, very good. The last piece of information I have for you, do you remember, there were two surveys, the 30 qualities survey and the district review? So I gave copies, hard copies of the results, to Terry to give to you. And again, you had good participation in this. There were 1,600 folks who submitted information to you about the district. And actually, 1,652 people.
Say that again, please.
1,652, and I think it tells you on this. Open your... Turn back your first cover sheet, and you'll see the number there. So we don't spend any time as associates on this with you, but I did want to take you through what... How this is formatted, so you understand. So folks, again, self-reported which group that they represented, and you'll see by each question, the results. Question two, the district... Let's say, the district schools provide a safe learning environment for all students. You can... We've got a bar graph there for you as well as their raw scores. So you can see that, you know, if you've got more than 50% of the respondents agreeing and strongly agreeing, then you know you've hit a home run. The issue for you as a board will be, as you look through these, if you've got folks on any of these questions where more than 50% disagree, then that's probably something you want to take a look at and wonder why they have that perception.
But the colors don't correspond to the group anymore after the first...
Right.
But I would say it's agree and down, right? If they strongly agree, that's obviously a positive as well.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. But I wanted you to have those results to, you know, do as you wish. This is really something that we provide for you as a piece of feedback, for you to use in whatever way that you want to. Anytime you get 1,652 people telling you anything, you know, that's a good thing.
Interesting.
You know, in many of them, you have 60% agreement and more, so that's, you know, that's something to feel very good about.
Well, I think this will be helpful when the board does our assessments going forward.
And I do have some extra copies that I can leave for. So that ends my part of your meeting. I think we've accomplished a lot this evening. Do you have any questions?
I've got one quick question. When you were looking through the surveys and talking to stakeholder groups, we haven't talked about in-house applicants. What was the feeling that you got from surveys and from communication with others?
So we had a few questions during our stakeholder groups about how do you address or handle in-house or, you know, internal applicants.
Internal applicants, thank you.
Internal applicants. So we said, you know, what we always do is we treat them exactly as we would any other candidate's application. And so we welcome those applications. If anybody's interested in applying, they will be in the pool with everyone else.
Was there any strong sentiment from the community whether they would want an internal candidate or absolutely not, or was there any discussion?
Every now and then, someone might mention, you know, that either there was a strong internal applicant that they wish would apply, and we actually asked them to, on a note card, write down the name of any applicant they would want us to reach out to, any potential candidate, whether it was an internal one or some person, superintendent from another school district they might have worked in that they highly admire. Because a lot of your folks have come to you from other districts, outside of Kansas even. And so we collected those, and I, to tell you the truth, there weren't that many internal applicants that... Whose names were given to us. So it just... Some of our groups, you know, suggested that it would be better to have a fresh, you know, set of eyes from outside the district. But it wasn't an overwhelming message either way.
Thank you.
So as I understand where we are, we have come to consensus on the qualities of a superintendent to be published. We wordsmithed a little bit Shauna's document. Shauna will work on that in the morning. I will proofread it, and it will be ready to go sometime tomorrow.
Yes, sometime tomorrow would be good.
Is there any other business that we need to do tonight?
Not from my perspective. You've accomplished a lot.
All right.
So our next up provides update to board on the 18th of December.
Yes, if you're still planning on being available on the 18th of December, I'll be able to come to you with just a short synopsis of the pool of candidates, not by name, but by demographics.
Okay. Well, we'll forward that report.
Thank you so much.
Saying no other business, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.